We will have an executive session meeting as soon as this regular scheduled meeting is over with. I swear to God, everyone we will meet in the, uh, my ex parte class. So, I ask that you make some kind of way to surprise.
Here, Mr. Walden, ladies and gentlemen, Brian, bless you. Lady, for having to speak for Brian, it will be done unless all the leaders in the county.
Amen. Y'all please join me to pledge to the flag.
I pledge the allegiance and security of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under one law, in the reasonable, liberty, and justice for all.
Please, we see. At this time, I would like to ask Senator Adam Rhodes, please come forward. He has a presentation for the Ballard family, Sergeant Commissioner Tommy Ballard. Sir, I will turn the, uh, the meeting over to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Reed and Commissioners for giving us a few moments tonight. Uh, Representative Travis and I often have, uh, the privilege, I'd say, and the honor to recognize some good work that's been done. And I don't have to lecture any of you on the work that Tommy Ballard did on the county commission. I will say that in service of county commissioner, it's the hardest job I ever had. And, uh, that's a good thing to say without that now. Uh, but I want to give Representative Travis an opportunity to make some, uh, some statements, and then I will, and then I'll have Ballard coming to come up for us to present this.
All right. Thank you Chairman and Committee. Um, you know, I was, I was talking to Larry a while ago and, uh, Kathy, when, uh, I graduated, Senator, you probably graduated, Senator. As young as you look, he's a tough guy. But I can't wait until I'm there. But anyway, that, uh, Kathy and Tommy, I mean, they were the envy of the hospital. I mean, they had the looks, they had the personality, entered years and years and years to this day. You know, you could never, you could never pick two fine people in the world that Kane, Brian, dear, your love should have them as, as parents. And, uh, um, I know Kane a little better than Brian because Kane had a red car down when, when, uh, he was eighteen or so. She took that dog, stayed around, so it was pretty cool. But what a great family. I mean, it, it, it's a honor to be here with them too, but do this tonight. We appreciate your time and love and support, Kathy, we're all sorry, and Brian and Kane. And, uh, and we love you guys. Thank you.
You know, I occasionally ask you guys, is there anything I can do for you? Uh, Commissioner Ballard was always fine, Senator, everything's good. And, uh, tonight I get a chance to honor him. I will say this, this proclamation, it's how things work in Nashville sometimes, uh, due to the timing of his passing. This proclamation is on behalf of the Senate and the House, the Iran and I. Uh, but in communicating this to our speakers, they desire for us to run a second proclamation in addition to this. Come session, in which the speakers of the House and Senate and the Governor will sign that proclamation. And we'll notify you guys to let you know when that happens in Nashville and choose to be there with us. And have his name written to the record books in the state of Tennessee. Now, I think this is appropriate because scripture tells us, let those who have served well be counted double honor. And that's what's going to happen with Commissioner Ballard. So nothing to wake up the crowd like a bunch of wearers, so I'm not going to read them. Because you've got a lot of business to do tonight, but I didn't want to read just a few. Whereas we are greatly saddened to learn the untimely passing of Thomas, Thomas, Tommy Gerald Ballard of Ray County. And whereas he was an exemplary public servant, consummate professional, who worked arduously to improve the quality of life for his fellow citizens in numerous capacities. Where, where he leaves behind an indelible legacy of integrity, property, and life, compassion, and loyalty in private life, and diligence, dedication, and all he's chosen to endeavor. Whereas it is fitting to remember the bountiful life of this exceptional public servant human being. Now therefore, Randy McNally, Speaker of the Senate, one hundred and fourteenth General Assembly, State of the House, concurring in conjunction with the undersigned hereby proclaimed honor member of Thomas Tommy Gerald Ballard. I've had him come up and present this proclamation.
Senator, if you all would like to come up here with all the family members, a lot better for a picture for you all to come up here.
Uh, we'll, and Commissioners join, too. Now, the commission's one thing, but this is a legacy. Yeah, this is a legacy here. Right.
Everybody get ready as close as you can.
We want y'all back up. Mr. Chairman, before you continue, will you, because I do apologize, I've got to get to another event, speak on behalf of, uh, a bill we carry into Tennessee on fentanyl. And, uh, along that line, just want to report to this commission that we are seeing a reduction in fentanyl overdosees and distribution in the state of Tennessee. And that's good, good work of law enforcement, some of those judges and law enforcement officers right here in Ray County. So be proud of your law enforcement. Thank you guys.
Thanks, thank you. All right, at this time, I'll go into the remainder of our workshop. Uh, we have a couple of items to add that's not on the list. Uh, if you're determined to come in late this afternoon, we'll go ahead and go through those right quick. We have an archived grant, uh, thirty-six, thirty-five, it is a non-matching grant, and let the commission replace that on the agenda, please. We have a three-star grant of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it is a non-matching grant, let the commission replace that on the agenda as well. All right, we've got those two items on there. Ms. Carmen, is that to take care of the issues needing to conduct up there?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is tourism director to address the commission concerning, uh, some fishing events coming up for twenty-twenty-six, January through June. And she has a postcard mailer, uh, that she'd like to go with us, and she has an update on one other item that will be surprised here for us.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Ms. Alex.
Okay, so let's start with twenty-twenty-six fishing. So that is one of the meetings that I hashed out, if you want to grab that one. Um, this is January through June, okay? Um, you can flip through the different tournaments and the different calls, like allocations, everything, and the very back page is the total. So I printed it at four o'clock, and at four-thirty, I got a call from a fishing director that said they're not going to be able to bring the amount of boats. And I said, well, we're not paying you fifteen thousand dollars if they're not bringing two hundred and fifty boats. So they pulled their tournament, so your actual total, I'm going to give it to you, um, eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And our hack will be forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Again, Carolyn, I'll give you this, so please have this. And this is January through June.
Now, has this been presented to the city of Dayton yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so if we place it on the agenda, of course, we're all under the understanding, this may contingent upon the city of Dayton and the city of Springfield, so you both come in to agree with us.
We all know the paper agenda.
Okay, and I will ask you a quick question because I was at the wrong with the room when I shouldn't have, should not have been.
Sure.
Which one got pulled?
The ADA. ADA King Theory National Championship, April twentieth through twenty-sixth. They have trouble with numbers and being able to provide, um, the amount of votes and success for our county that we need and whatever they pay them. Um, so I think their organization as a whole is struggling right now because they're pulling back a good bit.
Well, Alex, did we, did we talk to, uh, CWRA about this, I think it's what, now thirteen tournaments?
Yes, and they've been approved through CWRA. You'll notice, like we said earlier, um, like end of May through August is a really hot summer month. You will see only tie tournaments, and in a tie vote, they catch it and weigh it or measure it and throw back. So that's the only tournament you'll see here in the very hot.
To, uh, to re- reiterate something that I had said before, to bring to, to the forefront here. Alex and I worked with CWRA's Fishery Manager, Mike Jockey, concerning this, and actually brought forth a study, uh, showing the, the best methods to do these tournaments. And with this program, this follows the best. Uh, because of hot months, we do not have the, uh, tournaments that are not toll catching release right at that second. That is the best way to keep the longevity of our fisheries going, is in the hot months, it's not had the factor of the brims in, uh, more of a kill situation. Uh, so thank you to Ms. Alex for giving advice to us on that, of course. And just to remind y'all that I, that we did give that to you, uh, a couple of weeks ago. We have any more discussion on tournaments?
Yes, so I noticed that on May second and third, we've got two hundred boats with, uh, field ants.
Yes.
And then we've got May second and third via bell, a hundred boats on the same week.
Yes, one is for a fee and one is, um, seven. And so I talked with, um, Jay Potter and Homeland Security, and they said that they would be able to accommodate this, but that the majority of our officers will need to be a field ant. Um, just due to the number of boats, you're only a hundred and twenty-five over is when we need their help.
And then they all agreed to mature the fishing budget.
Yes, yes. We have that documented in our contract.
Okay.
How they're ready to catch and release, so we can uphold with them if we have issues.
Thank you for that. I'll place it right up in the table.
Any other discussion? Same that the police, this commission will place on your agenda?
Place it on me.
Ms. Alex?
Okay, the next one is the email printed off. I just thought this was the quickest thing, this way to show you the breakdown of a, an event postcard. So this is going to be an example, this is the one that went out for twenty-twenty-five, and we're wanting to do the same thing for twenty-twenty-six. It'll be the same size, except all, obviously, all of our group babies have sent to your event. And this will go to ten thousand humps in Ray County mailed out. So you'll see at the bottom, fifty-four hundred dollars is the total, and that mailing, postage, all that. And Main Street Dayton is going to deliver those orders with me, and our hack would be twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Okay, anybody have any questions concerning that? And then we'll come out and hold tempo till Monday. Same that the police, this commission will place on your agenda?
Place it on me.
All right. And you have one more thing you want to raise up?
Yes, so just quickly, this came off the press today from the Herald News, so I just wanted y'all to have a copy. Um, the most recent source got. And then in the other packet that I gave you is a printout of just some of the main things that, I mean, everything concerns you all. The main things like the agendas, the minutes, the calendars, the videos, that kind of thing. Uh, I redid raycountykeen.org, reorganized it, it's mobile friendly now, it's English and Spanish. Um, and I had a Spanish worker from Ladyboy, so I was hopeful with kind of check it, but not my, not my forte. Um, and so it's just really user-friendly and organized. So I just wanted y'all to see it and review it when you have time, and if you have suggestions or see something missing, please let me know so I can get it updated on there for us.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions you could ask? Same that, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll go over to item number five, discuss supported agency, CAC, and We Care. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These three are items that we wanted to put on the agenda of how the documents were before the meeting. The, uh, CAC, uh, on the commission assessment, put that up, we'll be with them discussing. And getting them approved by Jim Turville. Women's recovery centers around the city have submitted all their papers. And the reason I did not have the resolution to bring that, of us, we were told that we couldn't spend any more opioid money this year, and these four C's will be coming out of opioid. And then we found out that's not true. We can spend it all year, this year and next year until it's gone. There is no start and completion, whether it's completion date or not start date, once you receive the money. For some reason, we as a commission, myself, thought that we had to wait for that to happen here and change. But we don't, so we decided to put them on the issue this month. Care Center, We Care Center, we've never given them any assistance, and, uh, we all know what they do for our community. They've got a women's shelter around the city, uh, they've got tiny homes for single moms that they're renting, uh, real cheap. They were free to five hundred dollars including utilities, assist them. But they are about to open two more houses, and I know y'all are going to be proud to know this. They're going to call them warming homes, but there's going to be a house, uh, here in town for men and one for women homeless in the winter, you know, when we have real severe weather. Police pick someone up somewhere under a bridge or whatever, but if that, that actually happened. Uh, they can technically warm them houses, they'll have that bed and a good hot meal. Uh, it's not going to create a homeless problem, of course, because they don't keep them continuously. It's for bad weather, that sort of thing, or injury, different reasons. So we just thought, as much as they live for us, they're nonprofit, they run the, uh, craft center down. Plaza, I, I couldn't see the building, I call it craft center, but they sell off, um, clothes and household stuff, it's donated, they paint it up, paint it, repair it, whatever. And all our money goes back into the program. There's no, very minimal amount of salary, about fifty percent, almost all our money goes back into certain indigenous people in our community. So I don't have them on the list, because we have gotten approved, that's stayed on all of them, but I'll have that for next year. So we stopped, uh, we, there was a spent time for that.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't, I didn't, I don't know if they need to wait till public comments to be on the agenda. I invited Mr. Rodney Potter, Keisha Miles here to give us kind of an update. They spoke with us last time, that was prior to their open house. And, uh, also, last week at our, uh, conference, uh, we, we were told, uh, in reference to opioid funds, that some of these entities would be, uh, entitled to some of the, we so decided in committee, of course. So I wanted, uh, he, see if they could speak about the CAC a little bit more, tell us what's going on.
They most definitely can speak, I hope possible, but I do have a question. Of course, Leo, I, I assume since I asked this question anyway, is Chairman of the Opioid Committee. We have a process that this commission has voted in for opioid money. And in that process, they took forth an application. And then that application and paperwork goes before the opioid diversion, disbursement committee, and then it comes to the county commission, once they've made their decisions and their choices. And I was under the understanding that that was in January, you mean, that we were, that we was doing that, that's what we had voted to do. So which part of that am I looking at?
Well, that's what I was cleared up, uh, before I started speaking. They had said they weren't going to meet in January, January, but I also thought, um, we're restricted this January, they're actually not. And I, I ran these three groups, uh, on the track, uh, Jim Turville, who's the director of these funds. She said she thought that I'll pre, uh, qualify, so we've already contacted them, one or two of them already filled out their applications. We may not be able to do this for next year because we've got to meet, they'll go and group with the applications.
Do we not have to have, Mr. Mayor, answer this question for me, please, I'm, I'm not trying to ask without letting you go, this is why I'm asking. Do we not have to open it back up and give the opportunity for other people to apply, as this has a standard that we set forward?
Correct. It, it's managed, and there is a process that is actually put on our website as to how to apply. And if you're going, and, and if you're going to consider others, they can open it back up, there's going to be just.
And then there would be a deadline that they've got to turn in, then even go to that committee, which I hope that both those organizations.
You're, you're a dude, I corrected in the meeting last week that, uh, myself and Leo, your attendant. That's the only thing, we didn't know that, that money is available year round. We didn't have to wait until January, that's what we, that's what I think the mayor's trying to say. Is originally, we thought, hey, no more money is ready to be available until next year, and that's not the case. You're right, there's a process, you generally have to.
Okay, so we need to be feeding, ma'am, we need to be feeding the places part of our agenda, the opportunity for us to vote, to open that back up for instead a time. You see how long you have to determine an application, which like I say, I hope both of you determine an application, and in that way, it gives everybody the fair equal ability to determine an application. So if, 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 does anybody have any question about that part of it? If not, I would like to say this, if this is a commission, I would like to place upon the agenda to do just that, to set it up so where we have a time set where you can turn your paperwork into the, to the finance department. You're, you're the one who's been taking, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Turn that into the finance department, get that to Mr. Leo and his committee, uh, when the time comes for it to end, and put that together, just like we did before. Uh, so if this is a commission, I can place that on the agenda.
Place it on the agenda.
Okay. Uh, now, with that being said, I do not want to take away from, from our fine folks that we have here to tell us about their open house. And, um, we can go there right now, since it goes hand in hand, and either one of us will like to come up and speak for those two organizations. You're more than welcome to, I'll, I'll take a little privilege to say we'll move it right now, thank you. Yes, sir.
Where do we go? I'm going up high, I'm not even going to come out. Apparently, he's not going to come up here, I thank you for this opportunity. I have these handouts for you guys, if you want them, this tells you a little bit more about our venture and some of our goals, um, moving forward. Let me have this top one, that's all right. Um, but we did have our, our open house, our reopen house. Um, we have had some hits with our CAC, but we're moving forward, and we are headed for compliance in every area that the CAC can be in compliance, uh.
Well, I want to say congratulations and welcome to you, there.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's been a, it's been a ride already, so we have right now, we have forensic interviewing that we use, we utilize with, uh, law enforcement, the DA's office, and, um, child protective services with the Department of Children's Services. Um, that's our main, uh, service that we provide right now, so every child, I think, as year before, in the twelfth judicial district, uh, comes to our CAC to talk about the worst experience of their life. So it's not necessarily a fun place. Um, other CACs, they, uh, they have a lot of services that instead of just the child telling, they're horrible, horrible thing to happen, and then they leave, um, they provide services like victim advocacy, and family advocacy, sometimes that's like a parent mentor, uh, trauma therapy. Um, some other CACs do medical services, which would be, um, like raising kids on children, which is not very fun, or severe physical views when they have broken body parts. Uh, we don't have those things right now. We do have a victim advocacy program, a family advocacy program, they're at the ground level, where we, we, we just recently, uh, established policy, and, um, and they're working a program. We're, I have a great team, they're young, they're ready to, to learn, and they're excited to help our, our clients. Uh, moving forward, we want to have, um, medical here, we've talked to Ruckus, and, and talking to, what's his name, Mr. Hough? And we're, we're trying to work all that out so that we can provide medical services, that's not a very fun part of our job either. Um, but it's necessary, and it can help us cooperate in evidence, and it can help give a child, um, justice, and, um, move them away from the perpetrator with physical means of the state. And, uh, we are, I'm really hoping to get a trauma therapist here, I want more than one. Um, for the past five years, I've been a severe abuse investigator with Children's Services, so I've been on the ground, we're working with severe abuse kids, and, and I can tell you that we need trauma therapists in this area. I've had to have kids go, uh, the closest one is Lenore City. I've had, and it's very rare that I have families that are willing to take their children to Lenore City, but I want to get the funds so we can bring that here, um, for children, um, and families. And, um, I also would like to get into our school system eventually, and, uh, speech, uh, awareness, child abuse awareness, maybe for body safety, um, so that we can continue to keep our kids safe. Um, Ray County, my old county, and, and that's my favorite in the twelfth judicial district, um, and I, I feel I got a lot of support here as we grow and forward. Okay, bye.
I just wanted to go over a couple of things from my bottom, for just a standpoint. Number one, Ms. Keisha's bringing the Titanic back up, basically, because it is a soaking ship, but she's doing a great job on getting everything back, accreditation back. Uh, we are now the home office of the Jones Advocacy Center for the district, which is great, so there's somebody up there every day. She mentioned trauma therapy. Uh, from my standpoint, to the years of childhood abuse that I've worked, the mother or the person that put the perpetrator in the home, because they're dating that man that just sexually assaulted their daughter. They need therapy just as much as the child does. They blame themselves for putting their child in harm's way. So trauma therapy is something we really need. We, long-term goal, I've always wanted us to be a facility that can do medicals. Uh, this Dickie McColl, he has two nurses now that are same certified, sexual assault nurse examiner, they can do rape against, but it's adult only. But he is willing to help us get those nurses pediatric trained, so we can do medicals. We're looking at a year or so down the road, we have a room available at the CAC, we can do medicals. He's offered to help us supply what we need as far as. Right now, if we have a sexual assault, I have to send, one, they come here, two, they have to go to TC Thompson. So, the family's constantly bouncing all over to get services. The child wants to tell what happened to them at the CAC, first to me, to the DCS worker, then they have to travel all the way down to a big hospital, in a big, non-friendly room, and tell again what has happened, while they're being given a sexual examination. They're just exactly like an adult sexual examiner kid, they're very, very invasive. Minimal for a child, we use a camera to be able to gather evidence, but short order, I'd like to get it up here. We know it's a year or so off, but it is in the works. Biggest thing is, we got the right person to take it over to the CAC, her heart's into it. We appreciate everything that you've done in making sure that we have a building, helping us go forward, and we're gonna get this done, and it's gonna be something y'all can clap.
Thank you, Rocky. Thank you. Appreciate you both very much. Do we have anybody here from the WIT here? Same as the, okay. So, we'll place on the agenda the application process to open up, and that will have dates. Ms. Barrett will lay that out tremendously like the way we did before, on the resolution, please, ma'am, with the dates of start and finish for Ms. Palmer to place on our website. All right. Any other discussion on item number five? Same as the item number six, discuss surplus property sale, mayor?
We have six or eight of those large recycled dumpsters, if you remember, they used seven rounds on the head.
And this is the property off the solid waste, I'm sorry, sir.
I jumped the gun, no. I'm not gonna leave that item on the agenda.
All right. So, we'll remove the item number six, discuss surplus property for the season, and that'll come back up at a later date, correct, sir?
That will be removed permanently.
Removed permanently, okay. So, that will not be coming back up at a later date. Item number seven, discuss industrial development board member appointment, is an unexpired term until March of 2029. Mayor?
I'm gonna point Mike Jolly to the development board, with Houghton, the development board, Houghton, and he's excited about serving, I think he'd get great conditions forward.
The police commission will place item number seven, discuss industrial development board member appointment.
Place it on the agenda.
Place on the agenda. Item number eight, discuss IT management, finance director.
Yes, sir. I am still researching that, and I'm not really ready to make a recommendation at this time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We will come back to that at a later moment. Item number nine, discuss surplus property solid waste, mayor?
There it is. You guys all remember the old dumpsters, that had the slime doors on, recycling, they no longer recycle that way, you now have to bundle your paper and bundle your cardboard and all that, you have to have a compactor that crushes it, and then bundles it, and we provide funding from state to get those. So, we just wanna sell it, I don't know if they'll sell or not, we're gonna send one to an auction, with your permission, see what they'll bring, if it sells good, we'll send the rest of them. If not, we'll just wrap it for a half, for a half. They're just set in a way, taking up a lot of space, and never have a useful.
Our usual process that we go through on the auction, correct, sir?
Perhaps we'll look at it.
The police commission will place on the agenda to surplus a portion of the solid waste material, let's see where we're at.
Place it on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jack Kaufman?
On my cell, a back tax market, I'd like to put this on the agenda for next week, and actually have a conversation, buddy, since Mr. Vincent wants to do it away.
Wants to do, wants to do away with the item on the agenda, don't he?
Yes.
Okay. And what, I don't understand what you're, what we can place.
The back tax property that, that run in the paper, basically, it's contracted, we notice the paper, and I would like for everybody in the commission to take a look at that, and see exactly what's going on with it, because I don't believe he is able to pull that legal.
Okay. Ms. Barrett, will you please address that, or will you be interested?
Yes. He stopped on a pulley, we're going through with it. There was some concern about whether we could sell it for exactly what was owed on it, if we were clarifying that. So, the agreement is taking it off the agenda, because it will be exactly like you saw in the paper, along with the cost that are associated with it. The cost would be back half.
Okay. So, what you want to do is gonna make a change?
No, changing.
Hold on just a second, Ms. Jack, let it finish, hold on a second.
We're not changing anything, that's why it's, so it will go according to the original advertisement.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk to him.
Thank you very much. All right. County officials comment. So, have any county officials here wish to make a statement, comment, question, add to the agenda? Have any commissioners, have you tried to add to the agenda?
I would like to, as you're aware, we didn't include Christmas Eve in our budget, I'm not even asking about that, to be honest. What I'd like to do though is propose something different this year, for our employees, just to say thanks for the good work they do, and hard work they do in this campaign. And so, what I'm asking is, December, Christmas Eve and Christmas are Wednesday and Thursday this year. So, I'm asking that we give them Friday off as well, the day after Christmas. And then the following week, New Year, the day after New Year's, I'm not sitting here saying, a little, don't wanna go there, I just say, we didn't put in our budget. So, I'm just proposing that, just to say thank you to our employees.
You're proposing two more paid holiday places? Those two days, specifically?
For the day after, for this, for this year.
So, that's 2025, the day after?
So, December 26th and January 2nd, which would both be Fridays.
So, that would, that would shut down county government, just something that I have this down correctly. Christmas Eve, Christmas, the day after Christmas, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, and the day after New Year's, correct?
Yes. So, since you mentioned shutting down the county government, I'm suggesting that, you have employees that actually have to work on Friday. You've got Sheriff's Department, you've got the Road Department, they're off on Friday. So, what I'm gonna suggest is, if Caroline Barrett drew up a resolution to reflect this, if they're already off, or let's say they have to work, then maybe they can take a different day, or a comp day, so that everybody is scheduled to work for their, for their hard
I'll open the floor for discussion from the commission. With pleasure, commission.
I'm not good on the agenda.
All right. We'll place that on the agenda. Any other commissioners have an item to place on the agenda? Mayor, do you have anything else placed on the agenda? Ms. Barrett? Ms. Palmer? Mr. Ralph? All right. That being said, we will go in now to county executives' comments, mayor?
I have it, thank you.
Commissioner comments. Mr. Bill?
Oh, two things, one thing I hope to say to that, she's not able to be here, but she doesn't, doesn't raise the good. Second thing, Mr. Mayor, where do we add on those signs pertaining to disposal of flags for the community centers? We talked about that at the Seminole Work Trump.
That's, uh, Bill, I don't remember, I think we've got two, but I need to check that.
All right, sir. Mr. Bill?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Leo?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bill?
Yeah, Mr. Steve.
I remember Sandy and her prayers and stuff, I don't know if she's heard of it.
Well, serious. Now, Ms. Sandy, she's already been home by a doctor, but she cannot come to next week, so we need her, so that won't be. Hey, sure, Ms. England will be here next week, but Ms. Sandy, sorry to tell you, she can't come next week.
Sir? And I was informed that you still have birthday yesterday, but I didn't do any, like, I like the birthday, it's great.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
That's already 64.
We're close. 55 is getting very close to that. Mr. Dick?
That's the name, sir.
Mr. Jake?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hart?
I just wanna say, let you get into the representatives of children's advocacy. And if anybody has not had a chance to go there yet, to see this facility, when you get a chance to do it, I think you'd be pleasantly pleased. That's all I can say.
Thank you, sir. I do. Yes, I just wanna tell them to make sure that they, you know, get in contact, they do meetings for Mr. Martin, and of course, for Ralph there, to get the outfits and fill it up, and then turn me in, and we'll open the door, and we'll go to there. That's sure.
With that being said, I will also remind you that we have executive sessions to be called, we will exit this room going to purchase pockets for executive session, our request is naturally illegal to be there, and I need Mr. Ralph to come as well. That being said, we will stay in the journal.
Mr. Jacob?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're not jerking.
Not yet. Are we still having opioid meeting next week?
Yes, yes, we are. Next, I'm sorry, it's my fault. Next, uh, Tuesday, uh, my fault.
Four seconds, you've got four seconds. All right, so, four seconds, you have that meeting, you'll vote out to start the process, and then you will go through the day. Maybe the journal.